I'd like to welcome all to our June 2nd hybrid town board meeting. Call this meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Pakistan, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Jamal Brown from the Holly Springs United Methodist Church. Got a very short warning for you this morning, and thank you for coming. And we're looking for some love words. Or something like that. I usually call him the love pastor, that's a whole other story. Thanks for coming.
I hope the mic can pick me up from here, because in my haste, giddy I left my mask in the car and didn't have a chance to run back. So I'll do it from here, I got a big mouth.
We have lots of bounces.
Oh, okay. Before I pray, I would like to just address everyone, obviously, we all are aware of the civil unrest that is going on throughout the country. And to me, the quick fix is very much common sense. So I say this to this board, I say this to the people of Holly Springs, it's common sense. The good book says, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." You can't make it no simpler or plainer than that. All you have to do is put yourself in someone else's shoes and ask yourself the question. The decisions I make, what I say, what I do, would I want that to be done to my mom? Would I want it to be done to my father? Would I want it to be done to my children? My son, my daughter, my husband, my wife? Myself? If the answer is no, then you just answered your own question. It's really that simple. So if blacks, if whites, Latinos would just use that golden rule, we wouldn't have the civil unrest we're having right now. We wouldn't have the mistrust we're having right now. We wouldn't be looking at each other sideways or differently as we are right now, just because of skin color, because it comes down to one thing. I want to be treated like a human being. I want to be treated with decency and respect, the same way you would want to be treated. The Lord gave that rule, it's a kingdom rule, that applies to all of life. However you want to be treated, then you treat the other person the same way. It's just that simple. And I don't know of anybody who does not want to be respected. I don't know of anybody that does not want to be loved. Can I do that?
Amen.
Amen.
So, as you make your decisions tonight, as you think it through the thought process, put the shoe on the other foot. Ask yourself the question, the real question, and then come to your decision. But I will state this, there's another eternal truth. And it says according to Genesis 8:22, "As long as the earth is in existence, there will be seed time and harvest time," meaning whatever seeds you put out there, there's always a harvest season. And guess who's the first partakers of the harvest? The farmer who sowed the seed. So that applies to life as well. If we'll pray. Father, we thank you for who you are. We thank you for your truth, we thank you for your love, we thank you for your eternal principles. Father, I pray right now for your spirit of wisdom and guidance, as decisions are going to be made tonight, or discussions are going to be had tonight in regard to the citizens of Holly Springs, both black and white. Father, both of different denominations, maybe different creeds, different heaths, but Father, we're all human. Father, I pray right now that you would give guidance, you would give wisdom, you would help them to administer the law with prudence and justice. Father, bless now with the opening of your spirit and your mind upon each of us. And Father, we give you thanks, we ask for your spirit to rule now, and we submit to your authority, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Well done, Pastor, thank you. Item number four, adjustment approval of June 2nd, 2020, meeting agenda, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose one change to the agenda for June 2nd. If we could put item six for the public hearing for the 2020 to 2021 budget hearing in front of the Pine Springs item. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Say that one more time, put six in front of five?
I'm requesting to put six in front of five, yes, sir.
Any discussion?
One second.
Do that, a second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes. Okay, thank you. We'll make a note here. And public comments, due to current restrictions on mass hearings or gatherings, public comment will be received in writing and delivered to council members prior to the meeting, as was done. Madam Town Clerk, can you give us something, please?
We received one public comment against the Pine Springs expansion, 58 in favor of the Pine Springs expansion, one in favor of the stormwater fee changes in the proposed budget, and one requesting a community meeting between the Holly Springs PD and the community facilitated by council.
Thank you very much. Tell the story. All right, well, let me go to the second item then. We'll start with agenda item six, public hearing fiscal year 2020, 2021, budget, public hearing. You're on, sir, Randy Harrington.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'd just like to go through about five slides and give you a brief overview and for you as well as the community who's here tonight and watching online. The last week that you had the opportunity to hear my recommendation to you for the fiscal year 2020, or fiscal year 2020, 21, operating budget, as well as the community investment plan, I'll give you just a few of those highlights here tonight. Might need some help from our town clerk today, thank you very much.
There you go.
So again, I don't know that we, if we can go back one slide? Just as a recap there, again, tonight, just the hearing, there's no action tonight. At the very end of the presentation, I'll highlight a couple of the next steps that are in the process, so go ahead, next slide, please. One of the things I mentioned last week was around how your strategic plan is the component that provides that foundation and that roadmap for the development of the budget, as well as the various policy directions that we go to, or are trending toward as a town. And these are built around one vision statement, as well as five particular strategic priority areas, as outlined here on the slide. Next slide. Some of the key takeaways, we talked about last week, one was around, obviously, the impact of COVID-19 and its impact on revenues, particularly sales tax, parkson revenue, and some of our development fees, and those are taken into consideration as the budget was developed. The budget also has a heavy focus on long-term planning and that infrastructure planning for our community. It also redesigns the stormwater program based off of the conversations we've had over the past year that council's been working on very hard around our stormwater program and identifying some of our limitations and some of our opportunities in the future of that program. And so the budget does reflect some adjustments in the fee structures to address inequities, as well as better respond to the aging infrastructure repair needs. The budget also recommends what's called a revenue-neutral property tax rate. This is a 6.09 cent reduction from the current rate to the-
What was that again, please?
A 6.09 cent reduction from the current rate to the new revenue-neutral property tax rate. Again, the revenue neutral being a level of revenue that would have been, that we would have anticipated, had there been no revaluation and no change, so from a total revenue standpoint. And it also continues a strong level of investment in the budget, a strong level of investment in our employees, who are so essential and such a valuable component to delivering high-quality services to our community. Next slide, please. Just a couple other highlights, the total budget totals 68.3 million, and that includes funding for what you might think of as all basic municipal services, police, fire, public works, water, sewer, stormwater, parks and recreation, our development services, economic development, those are some of the key services, engineering as well, that fund part of that, that are components of that 68.3 million. There are six new positions that are recommended in the budget, there are three in public works, one of those is focused on solid waste, and the other two related to concrete repairs, these would be new sidewalks, curb and gutter repairs, as well as sidewalk maintenance and repair. There's one new position recommended in police for animal control, one new technician position in planning that would focus on permitting, and then one information technology department position, geographic information systems analyst, to support our mapping database needs, all that core information that's used by all departments in terms of planning operations and delivering services to our community. When you look at all of the recommended fee adjustments in the budget, for the typical resident, the typical homeowner, then in that case, it totals to $4.83 increase per month, and that's focused around refuse collection, recycling collection, our yard waste collection, as well as some of the fee adjustments that are incorporated for the revisions in the stormwater program. Next slide, please. So the next steps, this is the last slide, Mayor and Council. Obviously, tonight is your public hearing opportunity for anybody to comment on the budget. Also, on June 4th, and this coming Thursday at 6:00 PM, at the Law Enforcement Center will be a budget workshop. That's an opportunity for you to ask any questions, explore areas of the budget that you have some questions about, and to help ensure that the budget is in alignment with where your expectations are for the community. Then on June 16th, at 7:00 PM, is when we have your scheduled budget adoption, and that would be here in the council chambers. And we do have information on our website, if any residents would like to find additional information, you can go to hollyspringsnc.us and review the information there, as well as, or if you'd like a hard copy or another form of information, residents are certainly welcome to reach out to our town clerk, Linda McKinney, at the phone number there listed on the slide, and she'd be happy to help with any of those information requests. So Mayor and Council, that's just a brief overview, I think last Tuesday, there were about 40 slides, and this, this is a condensed version down to just about five slides, but I think it encapsulates-
Forty-two.
The core components, right, thank you. But anyhow, I look forward to more conversation with you on Thursday evening.
Is there any comments for tonight? This is for information only, as you know. And I have no one signed up for the public hearing, I've never done this for a long time, but is there anybody here that would like to speak on this subject tonight briefly that didn't sign up? No one signed up, so we'll open and we'll close the public hearing. Any further comments? All set? All set. All right, we're now going back to item number five. This is unfinished business from March to today. Thanks all for the patience. Pine Springs Preparatory Academy Middle School Development Plan. 19 DP 10, 19 SEU 06, Sean Ryan, Planning and Zoning. Sean, you are on, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, fellow council members, I'd like to recuse myself as I did last meeting.
Motion.
Motion to recuse Councilman Villetson.
Let's just make a second, all favor.
Aye.
Hey, Sean, thank you again.
Thank you, good evening. Sean Ryan with the Department of Planning and Zoning. The purpose of this agenda item tonight is to continue council deliberations on the requested special exception use and development plan with associated waivers for Pine Springs Preparatory Academy. There are two requested motions tonight, one on the finding of fact for the special exception use, followed by a motion on the waivers and development plan. Just to recap, council discussion on May 19th, the town council did hear evidence in a public hearing, that public hearing was closed. Following that public hearing, town council granted a setback reduction variance, but did not grant a building height variance. The applicant has provided revised building elevations that meet the maximum height requirements of the unified development ordinance, so tonight we are considering the remaining items for this project, special exception use development plan, and the associated waivers. Just to reorient the public and council to the project location, it is along North Main Street, just north of Catha Drive and south of Rosewood Center Drive, Rosewood Center Drive, in the northern part of the town's jurisdiction. This was the proposed site plan that was presented to council on May 19th. I just want to go over the waivers one more time, one was a parking reduction waiver, with an area for future parking to be added, located in purple on the screen. A parking location waiver to allow more than 75% of parking between the building and Richardson Street, that's the area highlighted in orange. A underground power line waiver, generally located where the blue line is along Main Street. And then there's also an additional waiver for building bays on the architectural elevation. And I will point out, because there was some discussion last time at council, about the future recreation area to the west side of Richardson Street. On your screen is a evolution of building elevations, the top building elevation is the one that was presented to the town council on May 19th. This is the North Main Street elevation. This includes the 42-foot building height, as well as the 57-foot building bays and roof lines. This elevation is no longer able to be approved, given that the height variance was not approved by the town council. In working with the applicant to address the 35-foot height limit, the elevation in the middle was provided, however, this resulted in an increase in the building bay and roof line to 61 feet. You can see that in order to meet the 35-foot height limit, where the mouse is on the screen here, the tower element was removed, the parapet walls were reduced in height, and those parapet walls were screening the mechanical equipment on the roof. So metal, metal mechanical screening has been added to shield that from the view of Main Street. In order to get the building bays and roof lines back down, to meet the town requirements, the applicant further refined these and added a little notch in the roof line, as well as recessed some window areas to meet both our roof line and building bay requirements on the North Main Street facade. So this elevation on the bottom is the final proposed elevation that is in compliance with the town's ordinance. At this time, I'd be happy to address any questions the council may have on the revisions.
Sean, excuse me just a second. I had asked our town attorney, because this is a long and tedious process, to kind of touch base on some of the galleys involved, and where we are, what we've been doing, and why we're here today. So, Mr. Shifano?
Yes, sir.
If you please, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan did an excellent job of doing a summary, not much to add, just maybe just to say that, you know, certain uses are a use as a matter of right, and certain uses are a special exception use, and this is a case where a school and a residential R20 is not a use by right, but it's a use that's subject to some special exception that you must find, you must find these exceptions based on the evidence that was provided to you at your last council meeting under sworn testimony, and, you know, I would just caution the council to look at only the evidence that was presented to you in a sworn testimony setting, and not some, maybe some other evidence that came to you outside of that. You're sort of duly bound to consider the facts that were established on the record at your last meeting, and I've asked you all through the last two weeks to go back and look at the video of that sworn testimony, which I think is proper to refresh your recollection and make your decisions tonight based on that evidence. So the quasi-judicial meaning of sworn testimony for this special exception use, and that's a, just a simple majority vote, and actually, the remaining items here are simple majority vote items, since the variance request has been removed on the height variance, there are a series of waivers as well that Mr. Ryan referred to, that are, again, a simple majority, they're ministerial-type decisions that you do relative to the site plan, and are designed to be, or expected to be relatively minor, and they don't run with the land, but the actual use here would run with the land, whether it be pine frame, some other use.
Who was that?
That would, I got, first time I ever got applause. The first time I ever had applause.
And before you were done? I mean, that's incredible.
I clapped off stage, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, Counselor. At this point in time, we'll back to Sean on questions or comments for Sean. Looking at, seeing none? Seeing none? No question?
Yeah, my comment I'll make is not a question, my comment I make, I think we sacrificed some aesthetically pleasing features from the variance submission to the new one, but the new one is in conformance with the town's UDO, but that's in the form of a comment.
Any further discussion, questions, comments? Anything from engineering at this point, Sean? All set? Just checking. Okay, with that being said, I would ask for a motion number one, and I think there's probably two, as I recall. Someone want to tackle it?
Any other discussion?
Any more discussion, I sit down, okay?
Counselor, I do have a question from-
Right, go ahead.
From the perspective of the findings of fact, and whether or not, as we consider this SEU or the quasi-judicial for the variances that we made determination on last week, if there are additional public facts that have come forward since then, and as a matter of public record, not something we received from the public, but something that was out in the public, we're not in a court setting, correct? So we're not like a grand jury where we're sequestered from outside information. Are we to either be able to question the petitioner about that information, to find the veracity of that information that was available publicly or not?
So, you would have to move to reopen the public hearing, reopen the hearing, and that would allow, you know, in a typical courtroom setting, you're limited in the scope just what you're opening it up to. However, the rules of evidence in these types of things are both broad, so if you're opening, reopening the public hearing, you're going to probably do it for both sides, any issue, pretty much any issue that's competent and material relating to your special exception use, finding the fact that the use is not injurious. You know, it's important to realize that the use you're talking about is a school of size and shape that could have here in addition to the road, and not a use by any particular school having, sort of, it should be a general school, you know, so if it's, if what you're looking to get to is something very specific to the specific operation of the school, may not be relevant information, you know, in the context of the special, of the findings that you must make, because it's not, you're looking for evidence to support the use of a school, not being specific school. And I, not knowing what you're talking about, I don't know, I don't know exactly what you're talking about, but if it's about school, a school use in general to this geography on this particular site, that will affect your findings of fact, then you can move to have the hearing reopened.
And would that be to reopen all aspects of the public hearing, or just to look at the special exception use of this portion of the hearing?
Well, any, any aspect of the special exception use, I think would be fair game to get more out of it there, you know, so it would be any of the four findings that you must make in the special use. You know, I don't-
To be, to be brief, I'm just trying to see whether or not we need to go back and retread all of the ground we already tread over, the variances, or anything else, or if we can talk about specifically the SEU, or if we need to go back and retrench ground on the variances if we do open it back up.
Well, I think you can be very specific, but once you open some, open the public hearing back up, you have to get anybody else to say, well, this other fact, set of facts over here, I need to get into evidence that may have nothing to do with what you're looking to get at. So it would maybe be a broader hole, which you can, you would be opening, when you want to open a very narrow hole, but, you know, if nobody's here to operate any more testimony, then you can do that.
Counselor, I'm glad that, my first finding of fact is the proposed use will not be injurious to the public health, safety, comfort, community, moral standards, convenience, gender welfare. That sounds pretty broad, beyond what you just said. So, given that we cannot have, we've had a lot of comments come in that might speak around that particular point, and given that for a judicial hearing, the intent is to get all testimony, and given COVID, I, I think you're opening up a good point to make, that have we heard everything we need to, just, just simply on the first finding of fact statement. So are you, are you saying you're open to, to opening up the public hearing again? Because I think there are some that have told you that they did not feel comfortable coming in, or just because of the way that it was the first announcement, and it was delayed, and, you know, it's an unusual time, and given the importance of something that making decisions impact the community across the street, the community decide, I think it's worth talking about opening it back up, particularly with how much input we've been getting since then, that you can't bring anyone.
To add on to Councilman Kelly's point, we have received an immense amount of public comments, way more than we typically will on an agenda item. When you weigh that with what council has told us, we can't consider any of it, which is frustrating, but it's the facts we must deal with. What we were presented with at the last meeting was, however, a demonstration that enough warning about the public hearing, to elicit all available evidence, wasn't sufficient. We had people giving testimony that they had heard about it at the last minute, we had a board member from the school who said that they weren't aware of it, or they would have done more outreach to people in support of the project. We had parents from the school who had to come here at the last minute, had to come from home when they realized we were having a public hearing about it. So it leaves me worried that we haven't received all the available evidence from everyone in the community. We have a process, and our staff has done a great job of making virtual testimony possible, but it was, we received one. We received dozens of public comments, but only one sworn testimony. And that worries me, that we're not getting a full finding of fact here.
Other comments? I find this somewhat troubling personally, but go ahead.
I think for me, yes, we've received a number of comments. I don't think that reopening the public hearing to admit that evidence, or have it resubmitted in a different fashion, is going to change the facts that were provided under sworn testimony two weeks ago. I don't think there's material things that are going to change the determination on the land use relative to what we're, you know, discussing with a school and a residential zoning district. So I just, I don't know that we're going to gain or lose anything from doing that. I think we're probably in a position to move forward, or at least entertain the discussion and motions on these. So I'm probably in the camp of not reopening the public hearing at this time.
Other comments?
Yeah, my point with this, if we're going to open everything back up, and we're going to have to retrench ground on every single waiver, every single variance, then that is not what I'm after, because I think we have heard sufficient findings of fact for the things we have already voted on, so I don't want to go backwards and reopen those discussions. But we still have in front of us the waiver for the SEU, and, and one of the concerns I have is one of the conditions, which is what's in front of us on the, on the screen right now, which is making a consideration about the SEU with the conditions. So it's, quite honestly, one of the conditions that concerns me with this SEU, not the SEU in and of itself.
Counselor, any suggestions?
So again, I don't know if we need to open the public hearing to have a discussion over those conditions for the SEU or not.
That's proper in your deliberations.
Okay.
You know, you can deliberate amongst yourselves and discuss the merits of anything that you can certainly do that, it's just accepting the traditional fact that you can't do outside of a public hearing, hearing setting. I didn't mean to imply that- I didn't mean to imply that if you were to reopen, you would have to hear everything over again. I just felt that wasn't my point, but you reopen a public hearing and you might want to hear just one thing from one person.
Oh, no, totally.
Be might be inappropriate to have to open it up for everybody.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And I probably should have been more clear to say, you know, it was, it's really one of the conditions of the S E U that has me concerned based on public information over the last couple of weeks.
What was what was the condition that was bothering you?
Or I guess they're not, we'd have to give it to the to the packet and I'll have to on the specific condition, the specific condition that concerns me quite honestly is the is the town for multiple, for multiple student reasons, the town being at the at risk, if you will, or on the hook for providing a hundred thousand dollars for the street signal that's there. So from a, you know, impact to the community for what we're we're asking to expand the usage and while we got multi, well, we still never got all the facts. I mean, I think we got to some of the facts that Harbor Creek has never had to pay any type of road improvements. Because they weren't, they weren't in effect at that.
Right, well, yeah.
So I I get that. And so the businesses that have come since have had to pay for that. However, this is making a considerable increase, i.e. adding another school is going to increase traffic there. And it is going to be a significant, not only traffic, but safety concern that that we did heard, that we have heard as as a as a finding of fact. So I I'm personally not as comfortable with the town being on hook for that additional hundred thousand dollars for the traffic signal that comes out of our budget at the time we are right now, and we've just got the budget presented to us. And in in rough dollars, we're probably looking at about a seven million dollar minimum, so shortfall in in revenue funds that are coming to the town for next year. So we're having to make choices, as is everyone. And so as we have businesses that come to our community, it's who's who's paying the fair share? Because that hundred thousand dollars is coming out of taxpayer dollars. Those are a hundred thousand dollars of every resident of Holly Springs having to pay for that. So that's that's all I'm after is, you know, we're all talking about who's being benefited from the federal and state and community tax dollars that are being put out there right now. And this is just one of those areas that, you know, I'm I'm concerned about. Why is it that Holly Springs taxpayer has to pay another hundred thousand dollars for a signal? That apparently meets warrant at this point, is that a fact or not, Sean? That was a question I did have and I should have asked that question, so I I'm assuming the signal does meet warrant at this time.
I will ask Rachel Jones in our engineering department to come come up and address that question.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening, Rachel.
So I believe at the last meeting, Josh Josh Renkey from Rainy Kemp Engineering was present to discuss that. But the applicant did, or Rainy Kemp submitted a signal warrant analysis on behalf of the project that was reviewed and had been approved by N C B O T for this intersection. And it met most of the warrants, but because it is a school, it functions a little differently from a typical development as far as the peak the peak hour trips. However, due to the safety concerns that come along with this particular intersection, that is what it took to to the threshold that the N C B O T agreed that it is warranted here.
Right, and and so if we don't move forward with that signal, and there's no money from the town to pay for that, then basically the project cannot move forward, correct? Because it's warranted as part of the project program.
That's correct.
I just want to make sure that was clear and I understood that.
Rachel, refresh my memory too. I I my recollection was that that although the school didn't have to do this, tell me if I'm wrong, right? They didn't have to do this, they were going to come up with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that money and the town would go with a hundred thousand. I think we talked to the town manager about that at the last meeting too, at great length. Am I correct at that?
That is correct. And due to the North Carolina general statutes, the town is, or the school is not required to participate financially, but they have, you know, proposed this partnership, financial partnership with the town.
I I tend to agree with Councilman McGrath on this, and if we're going to entertain the motions, I'd like to propose some additional findings of fact based on the testimony we received two weeks ago for discussion and and get input on that if we're going to move forward and in considering the applicant's facts, I'd like to consider some other ones based on the testimony received. The the first one, based on the testimony from Sergeant Brienzey from our police department. I'd like to propose we find as a fact that the signal is necessary to the safety of the inhabitants of the proposed use, the adjacent parcels, the motoring public in general, and that the proposed land use is not appropriate without the signal. I'd also like to find as a fact or consider that we find as a fact that the council has an agenda item for approving the bond issuance of public education revenue bonds in the amount of fifty million dollars, which implies the school has public education revenue to pay the bonds back. Third, I'd like to propose we find as a fact that the town's proposed budget for F Y twenty one does not include an allotment to fund the traffic signal at Pine Springs, and the town can only spend money that is duly budgeted. The last one I'd like to propose we find is a fact that the public hearing for our F Y twenty one budget has just been completed with no public sentiment that the town funded a traffic signal for Pine Springs.
I guess I'd like to ask the question again to town manager, can you give us a an update on the discussion as it relates to the budget?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The budget does not have any specific funds for this project. There are funds that are available, some of your unallocated funds for transportation. But right now, there's nothing specifically identified in the budget. But but again, there is some unallocated funds that should you decide to move forward, those would be the first funds that I would look at in terms of identifying for our contribution.
Thank you, it's my thought. Other other conversation or questions?
So is there an opportunity for us for us to, counselor, I guess I'm asking this as a question, is there an opportunity for us to ask the applicant whether or not there is willingness in the in the safety of our community and the interest of the community to consider fully funding this traffic signal? We already know that it's not, it's not in accordance with North Carolina statute to to compel a school to provide road improvements. However, this is a safety improvement, if you will, because of what you know, just mentioned, that the the signal warrant was not because of the safety consideration, because of the things surrounding. Again, while it's while it's a gray area, yes, I get it. I I think in the wake of doing business and and what we're trying to add to the community here, I think that's a question worth asking. And if we can strike that as a condition in the packet, then I would probably consider this S E U potentially different.
So I I guess it's my job to make sure that the that the hearing runs fairly smoothly and, you know, unfortunately, I'd probably say, yes, you can do that. You'd have to both appeal to the hearing to get that level of information back from the accident. And then the only caveat is that you may allow, build that towards, you may get more information on different aspects. Want to hear, don't want to hear, I don't know, you just want to have a free and open hearing of facts alone, there are facts that are presented. Their willingness to say transportation is probably a fact, just to settle and speed your discussion, assuming that's that finding of fact proposed by a town in the period past, that 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 fact would be relevant to your decision on a special exception use. You could act on a special exception use subject. It is, right now, you're making a finding, the proposed finding is that the town comes up with a hundred thousand dollars. You could quit this project without that finding and still requiring the traffic signal. And therefore, the question that you're going to ask the applicant, both ask and ask, might be irrelevant because you assume one answer or the other, but it's not going to change the fact that you found amazing.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that that helps.
Wouldn't that leave it kind of a mumble?
Not not really, because then if it if without reopening the public hearing and re-trenching all this ground, it it puts it back in the in the petitioner's court, much like the change in the architectural drawings from the last meeting to this one. They made a, they made a decision to move forward with the project to change their height elevation. And I would agree with Merple Town, but yes, it it is certainly less aesthetically pleasing now that that has been done. So I'm not necessarily thrilled about that, but that's, you know, that's that's what it is. That was, that was a decision that was made by by the the council at the last meeting, so I'm comfortable moving forward with that, but I'm I'm comfortable moving forward at this point to make a recommendation to remove the town's responsibility for that hundred thousand dollars, knowing that if it's not paid, then the project doesn't move forward. If the funding doesn't come from someone else, then the project's not going to move forward because of the signal.
Well, you had, you had said we don't have all the facts just a couple of minutes ago, that raises then why, why are we not opening it back up?
Well, the only fact I was questioning was whether or not the applicant is willing to pay for that. So the counselor has just
Right.
Basically taken away the reason for me to open up the fact finding because that's the only fact that I really needed at this point. And 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 it becomes kind of a moot point. So if we remove that condition, then it's up to the conditioner to decide, you know, whether that is relevant or not.
Right, but that does not, that does not help the one that I'm still having questions on in terms of question one. Is this will this not be dangerous to public health, safety, comfort, community, moral standards, community, gender, welfare? And given the unofficial input that we've been getting, it feels like we should open it back up to make things official for both sides. Because it's a big decision to add a school in the middle of a community and we've already heard that it's, you know, there are some there's some issues with some of the communities with having a school there for safety.
Are we, are we getting unofficial, are we getting different unofficial? Because I thought all of us were past all of that. I thought all of us have been passed all that information and as we heard.
Oh, I was, I was ready to make a comment.
It was fifty eight to one, I'm not, I'm not sure where.
But that's not, it's not a number.
No, I I understand, I mean.
You know, Arbor Creek is somebody home, so I I think it's not, I would like to hear more.
I would like to remind the council with all due respect, and I'm probably the only one here who'll say this. We have talked about this subject over three hours the last time we went through it. We talked about this exact item for about thirty minutes. And I'm somewhat surprised that we're bringing it up again one more time after starting this whole project in March. That's my, that's my piece.
Understand, and I and it's a big decision and we don't do this all the time. So I think it warrants this type of discussion if there's still some unknowns. More information that could be gathered and if it wasn't for the COVID and how we read, we had the scheduled meetings, it would be different, but it, but we were impacted. And I have heard and we heard in the hospital, that not everybody felt comfortable or knew of the need to come in. So I think that we are making a decision with missing some facts that are, that we can bring into the decision point because they're not part of the testimony. So I would like to make sure that we have all the information we need. I do not feel like I have all the information at work, just given the volume of comments that have been given from my side.
Well, last comment I'll make is that during the quasi judicial public hearing, I personally should not have done this, if I did, I've done it before. We allowed six different people talking. They were all pretty much against the project, but it was all because of of traffic, any snakers, et cetera, is my recollection. And that was not what they should have said because it wasn't expert testimony. We let it go. I I I'm really confused beyond belief, what are we trying to find out that we don't know? I have trouble.
For for me, I found out what I needed to know.
Okay.
And that's been resolved, so for for my, for myself, like I said, I'm I'm comfortable moving forward with this proposal with the removal of the hundred thousand dollars for the town's responsibility for traffic signals as a condition.
Counselor, any further comments? Sounds like a dilemma to me.
I mean, you're at a point where if somebody wants to make a motion open a public hearing, you get a second and vote on it, you know, or make a motion, I mean, you guys act by motion, so.
It doesn't sound to me that we have the it doesn't sound like me that we have the will of the council to reopen public hearings, which if we don't, yeah, I I'm concerned about facts that we might have missed because of the the nature of the hearing. Having said that, I'm prepared to vote if need be. Like my fellow council members, my main concern about this is traffic and safety. And the one sworn testimony we did receive by email was from a single resident, but that resident is the elected H O A president of a very large neighborhood directly impacted by this. And his testimony was very clear that without some specific improvements to that area, the traffic signal by itself, in his opinion, was not enough to guarantee the safety and mitigate the effects to his neighborhood. We've also received testimony about the benefits of the school. We've received a lot of public comments about the benefits of the school, and I have no doubt the school serves it its community incredibly well. But we have a larger community to think about that is going to be affected by this and in my, the way I took the facts to be is even with this traffic signal, even if it is fully funded by the applicant, the best it'll do is keep traffic the same while we are adding more children to that area. We don't have any firm plans onto whether that will all be at the same time or will be staggered, but even it, I don't know if it makes a difference. Staggering it is we're splitting the kids up amongst a larger period of time and adding more traffic and adding traffic, and we're just splitting it up over more time, or we're adding a lot more traffic at one time. So I have severe reservations that adding another expansion to this school, adding more students is going to negatively affect the neighborhoods adjacent, specifically Arbor Creek, because I'm not quite I'm doubtful that this traffic signal is going to stop traffic from using their neighborhood and endangering the residents of that neighborhood. So if we're ready to vote, then 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 we can vote. Those are my concerns.
Any further comments? I I'm sorry, I find this somewhat disappointing, but that's me. Any other comments? Someone want to make?
I'm in agreement that even with the like, because of the testimony from Arbor Creek, there are some significant tra- traffic safety concerns. Also given the testimony we have from the neighborhood next door that it was not off to, I feel like the facts have not been wrong.
I think I'll have to differ on that part, but yeah, I think that, I think the findings of fact, we have expert traffic engineers and and others that have that have told us that traffic signal is what is needed and warranted at that intersection for the safety of our residents and for the traffic control in that area. We can't necessarily control and, you know, there are there are folks, I think, that understand that that people are going to do what they're going to do as far as going through Arbor Creek, whether or not there's a traffic signal there. So I think that's that's time for, that's probably a discussion to be had somewhere down the road. Whether that comes as a as an issue to us from Arbor Creek is how to do that, and I think that's part of our traffic calming is affecting multiple communities, not just Arbor Creek, that that we're already in ongoing conversation, so I think it can be had there. But again, if if we're kind of in this luffberry, to use a aviation term right now.
I don't know that one.
We're trapped across the circle from each other. We're dead even in this fight, if you will. I I'm happy to go ahead and make the suggestion motion number one to make and accept the findings of fact for consideration of and to approve an S E U with con- with the conditions as stated in the packet removal and removing the condition that the town paid a hundred thousand dollars for the traffic signal.
Can I make a quick question to counsel real quick? It it sounds like we're heading toward a possibility of a split, we obviously have to see how the voting goes, but considering we have a recued member, it would still be, we would still be able to come to a decision tonight.
Sure.
I just want to make sure. Sometimes the math gets fuzzy.
Any other questions, Counselor?
I would just like to ask Councilman McGrath if you'd consider amending your motion to include the four facts that I recommended earlier.
I I will amend my motion to consider those four, to add, to add the four facts that you mentioned earlier.
I'll second your amended motion.
Most of them made in second of all favor.
Aye.
I'm sorry, go on to your role call. Sean McGrath.
Aye.
Christine Kelly.
Aye.
Dan Berry.
Aye.
Aye.
Pete Dillison is recused. Aaron Wolf.
Nay.
All right, we have the first time we've had in years.
Mickey, earn that paycheck, man.
Yeah, earn, earn nine bucks an hour. Counselor, kind of explain to me, since I've got a vote, the differential between the two, that motion and the nays. Well, let me say it a different way. If I, if I vote yes, what is that? If I vote nay, what is that?
If, if you vote yes, you are accepting the proposed findings with the applicant, with the exception of the finding that the town is going to pay a hundred thousand dollars. And then you're also accepting the findings that Mr. Berry had read out, that, you know, the, the traffic one is basically a restatement of the testimony from the traffic engineer, the delighted necessary to the inhabitants of the property and adjoining property, motoring public in general. And that, yeah, yeah, I think one of his proposed findings was that the school has the resources to pay for the traffic signal and, and that.
We had our budget here, our, our FY twenty-one proposed budget does not include an allotment to fund the traffic signal at PSPA. And we can always spend money that's duly budgeted. And the last one was that we've had our public hearing on the FY twenty-one budget with no public sentiment submitted that the town fund the traffic signal.
Can I continue my question? What happens to the project if it's a yea? What happens to the project if it's a nay?
If it's a yea, they're entitled, they have a land entitlement to build a school as proposed. That particular piece of real estate, subject to the, all the conditions that, that would be met with the installation of traffic signal and, and the various conditions in your resolution. Nay was, it, it would, it would fail.
Would that not stop the project?
It never stopped the project.
Fine. And we're sure of that.
Well, sort of.
I'm sorry, it's a question.
The applicant has the right to appeal to the spirit report to make sure that you based your findings on competence of the council. You know, there's, so there, there, there may be a review in spirit report of this decision. There may not be, you may win.
With the rationale behind, sometimes I, I think it's a good idea for us to tell people why we vote one way or the other. Sometimes that's very important. In order to keep the project alive and going, as I understand it, then my vote yea would be that exact same. Is that correct, Counselor? If I vote yea. In that fact, I will vote yes. Okay? All right. All right, we've got that one. Let's go with number two.
Make a motion to determine the appropriateness of waivers and approved development plan for Pine Springs Preparatory Academy Middle School with the conditions as stated in the packet.
Your second?
Aye.
Second. Much of the mayors say in all, and I'm going to do a roll call again. Sean McGrath.
Aye.
Christine Kelly.
Nay.
Dan Berry.
Aye.
Aaron Wolf.
Nay.
I will stay with what I was. I say aye. Motion passes. Three to two. Okay? I think it's nap time. Thank you, Counsel. Thank you for letting me offer opinions. Item number seven, public hearing, public hearing on Pine Springs Academy bond issue. John Chafano.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I believe the school may have a representative here if you have any questions. This is a public hearing on their education revenue bond. The school is proposing to get approval for a fifty million dollar bond issuance, and the bonds are paid by the revenue that the school generates. There is no obligation whatsoever of the town to repay any of these bonds, but the IRS regulations just require prior to a, a school, public school or private school issuing bonds of these types, that they get approval of a governmental agency. It could be the county, state, or you. You know, you're, you're just the friendliest, so we're here to do this, do this service for them. So you could just open a public hearing and accept any, any testimony on the appropriateness of these bonds for the school. And then there's a, a motion to approve the bond.
Understand. Any questions of the Counselor at this point? As we've said before, there is no one who signed up for public hearing, so I, at this point in time, I'll open and close a public hearing. Is there any further discussion? We've been down this road before. No further discussion? May I hear a motion? Yep.
Motion to approve resolution approving and principal the issuance of bonds by Pine Springs Academy.
Second.
Much of the mayors say in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, one nay was Christine Kelly, so it's three to one. Motion passes. Okay? Item eight, public hearing, twenty DPO one, twenty SEU oh three.
We gotta, we gotta bring Pete back.
I'm sorry. Public, want to make, are you, motion please? Motion to bring Pete back.
Yeah, we just need to wait for him to come back.
Okay, we'll wait for Pete. He's coming back.
I text him.
He texted.
Mayor, we're going to have to add a raise to the budget for you. We still have a couple of days.
Welcome back. Do we need to vote?
I don't think we need to vote, Counsel.
Do you need to vote, Counselor?
To readmit?
Read.
Motion to readmit Councilman Villetton to the meeting.
Second made and seconded, Sean McGrath.
Just thinking about it.
We're voting.
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Everybody voted yes. All council members. You're a very popular person. Item eight, again, public hearing, ninety DPO one, slice twenty SEU oh three, twenty V A R T C, page oh two, page twenty, or twenty wave oh nine, Duncan's Ridge well, number five. That would be Sean Ryan Planning and Zoning and Rachel Jones, if he has issues in engineering. Sean, you're on.
Thank you, Sean Ryan, again with the Department of Planning and Zoning. This agenda item is a request for a special exception use development plan variance and waiver for Duncan Ridge well, number five. Tonight, we will hold a quasi judicial public hearing and then consider a resolution for the special exception use and variance, and then entertain a motion for the waiver and development plan associated with the special exception use. This project is located at six two three seven Lorca Lane, which is in the southern part of the town's jurisdiction. It is located in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. The map on the left-hand side of the screen indicates the property location within the overall town, the red circle. And the map on the right-hand side of the screen is the specific property, which is located at the end of Lorca Lane. The land use and character plan designates this property as residential neighborhood. Residential neighborhood is intended to support residential neighborhoods and their supporting services. The current zoning is R thirty residential. Although the property is an existing community well site, the UDO requires non-municipal utilities to receive special exception use to ensure that they are not being located in a way that may be detrimental to surrounding properties or other land uses. This is the proposed site plan. The additional building area is approximately one hundred and eighty-six square feet with the addition of a backwash tank and one parking space. Due to the size of the property, no tree preservation is required. However, I would like to point out the areas located or highlighted in green are the proposed preserved tree areas. So the applicant is utilizing the existing vegetation on the site to meet all of our landscaping requirements, as well as provide for appropriate transition between adjacent properties. The area highlighted in orange is the primary area of the site. This is the proposed structure for the property. You can see it does look like a typical residential shed, so the applicant is requesting alternate compliance with our primary building facade requirement. There were no engineering related items for this project. Our planning board representative tonight is Mr. Stuckey. He is in the audience. If you would like to invite him up to go over the planning board discussion, they did recommend approval nine zero.
Green Meyer, for name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Mark Stuckey. I live, currently live at fifty-six thirty-two Voorhees Lane, part of the ETG, excuse the ETJ jurisdiction. Bear with me, this is my first time, so I'm green at all this.
Welcome aboard.
Baptism by fire, so to speak, right?
It's, it's only my second, so don't worry about it.
The planning board discussed the following issues and concerns on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. The maximum capacity of the well system, and if there's potential for future expansion. Secondly, if the town has water service available to the area. Thirdly, how many trees are being removed? And fourthly, the storage of phosphate and chlorine and potential hazardous to adjoining residents. A little background on the project. A waiver of voluntary annexation was approved by the town manager on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, as authorized in the development procedures manual, section one. Since this parcel is at the back end of the neighborhood, it is not adjacent or close to the town's corporate limits. Access is, is via an NCDOT neighborhood road, and public utilities are not within a reasonable distance to the parcel for connection. Duncan's Ridge subdivision, phase four, was approved November sixth, two thousand and seven, without annexation being required. Parcel was zone R thirty on January seventeenth, two thousand and six, when the ETJ was extended to this property. The funding sources are not applicable. The attachments for this particular project, the first one is twenty EPO one Duncan's Ridge well, five PB staff report. The second one is twenty DPO one Duncan's Ridge well, proposed motions and conditions. The third one is twenty DPO one Duncan's Ridge well, five petition and plans. And the fourth one is resolution twenty dash ten, twenty DPO one Duncan's Ridge well, five. The planning board has reviewed all the engineering documents, and we're making a recommendation, a recommendation of approval, nine, nine votes positive, zero nay.
Thank you for your hard work, Mark. Any questions, Mark? Is here.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Done good. Welcome aboard.
I was ready through it. Can we add up the stat?
At this time, we recommend opening the quasi judicial public hearing and then hearing the applicant's presentation.
Say, say the part about the applicants again.
The applicant has a presentation once the public hearing has been opened.
Okay, afterwards, right? Okay. Just checking. At this point in time, once again, I would say we have no one signed up for the public hearing, so I would open and close a public hearing and look forward to talking to the applicant. Again, thank you, Mark. And again, I, I understand you've been sworn in, so please, again, name and address, please.
My name's Marco Menendez. I live at twenty-five sixteen Greenway Avenue in City of Rock. Happy to be here tonight to discuss the Duncan Ridge well, number five. This is an existing Aqua well site. I'm a professional engineer with KCI. We work with Aqua on various projects, and I'm happy to be working on this project. And that's why. So this is, as I've said, an existing well site. This is the existing well building. It consists of, you know, the small shed-like building with a little doghouse where the actual well is located. The address, six two three, thirty-seven Lorca Lane, about a one point three acre lot, again, located at the end of the cul-de-sac and zoning R forty. And it is adjacent to an existing home property on one side. It does provide water, you know, to eighty-eight residential connections, but that doesn't necessarily affect it. As far as the improvements that are necessary for the site, there were some elevated levels of iron and manganese, and Aqua is moving forward with the plans to improve the water quality, so that the residents can continue to get the good water quality in their home. So what you see here in the pictures are what the proposed building would look like. In addition to the building, there is a required tank. Periodically, the filtration system needs to be cleansed, and the, the tank there would provide the water necessary to, to cleanse the filter. The proposed facility, as you can see, about seventeen feet, eight inches by thirteen, and ten feet, nine and a half inches high. The, the supply tank is fifteen hundred fifty gallon backwash supply. And there is a, a ground level tank that's necessary for the backwash wastewater effluent before it discharges to, to the surface. There are several required approvals. One is with the, the state, the North Carolina BEP Public Water Supply. We've already submitted and received approval from Public Water Supply for this project. And of course, as you know, the special exception use for a non-municipal water treatment plant. And this, again, iron and manganese removal system is necessary to improve the, the quality of the water for the rest. There is a variance being requested for off-street parking. This parking surface is typically a gravel parking surface for, for Aqua. That is their standard, but beyond their standard, we believe that the gravel driveway is, is less of a deterrent, deterrent for people to come onto the property. In addition, it does, you know, cost less, and there's a lower construction costs applicable to a low rate for the cost. The waiver of video section three point, point oh eight is in reference to the primary facade. This building will match the existing wellhouse already on site. And it's a, it's hardy plank siding, you know, which is typical for a maintenance-type facility. And it is located in a relatively remote area, and as Sean indicated, it's, they're going to be screened. Actually, my presentation.
Questions to the applicant?
I'm just wondering what are the health concerns with the raised level of iron and manganese? Because it's failing EPA standards. What does that mean, health wise?
It's a, it's a secondary standard for EPA. And so it's, in essence, it's, it's considered a nuisance. What happens with iron and manganese is that it's, when it comes out, it can stain things. And so you get some browning in your tubs and so forth. And when you wash clothes, you can get some browning that grows. And so right now, it's considered a secondary standard.
But no health issues is just what it's doing.
That's correct.
Other questions? No? I think we're done with questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion, Sean?
Just have a quick question for Rachel.
Question for Rachel. That'd be Rachel Jones from Engineering.
Running all the hard questions tonight, Rachel. Just, just trying to, just trying to remember, I know we had this discussion a while back on the planning board about, about town utilities down to this neck of the woods, or as we start to move development out further down, you know. about town utilities down to this neck of the woods, or as we start to move development out further down, you know, whether it's Castle or Agent Ferry Road. What's the closest run to this development? I know that last one, you know, came down to the cost decision, whether or not to run public utilities out there and to minimize those concerns about the chemicals that are in well water out there.
Sure, there is an existing eight inch water line on Buckhorn Duncan. That comes from Harnett County, but it is a town utility. But to convert the neighborhood to a town utility, it would have to be a majority vote of the entire neighborhood, which is difficult to achieve. To the specifics, but it takes a certain percentage of the residents in the neighborhood to actually vote, which is very difficult to achieve. So I think it would be up to the residents in the neighborhood to make that initiative. To transition from well to county utility.
But the water is available out there?
Yes, now, I don't know, we have not looked at with this development what it would take to connect, you know, a water main to the eight inch. It's within the one thousand feet that our UDO states as the minimum distance. So, I mean, that's something that if they ever wanted to go down that path, we could, we could look at that with them and and see what sort of infrastructure costs, you know, would come along with that, but it.
And this development's fully built out.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
There's no secondary supply from town water to that well, but right, sometimes when we see these, there's a secondary supply that comes from a water line?
No, not in this case.
This one doesn't have that.
If there were costs, would you, you would expect them to pay for it? Or is that, what have you done in the past?
Mr. Shisano, do you have any idea in the past if we have retrofitted a neighborhood from well to public utilities?
I don't know how Holly Springs has not done involuntary annexation. Their share involuntary annexation is ninety nine hundred thousand. And, you know, the requirements in the statutes are that sixty percent of the homeowners have to vote in a rubber random to approve the involuntary annexation. And that's, in essence, not, not allowed. Were we to, you know, require, were we to try to go down the involuntary annexation road, we would not be able to recover any cost. Town would have to go in and do not only the main trunks. And they typically buy Aqua at five eighths of an inch water line, or three quarter inch water line. Those types of things, not only the mains, but the meters and their service to the house. It would be a tremendous expense. We would not be able to put on if anybody else put on.
If it was voluntary, would you expect them to take it up?
Voluntary typically would do, you know, the service to the street would be taken by the homeowner. The main trunks are done, you know, ordinarily sensibly, the developers, they're done for their it's a cost development, the town doesn't bear any cost with that, but we have never dug up an existing water system and replaced it with our own. That would be, that would be completely on us.
Counselor, this, I'm having deja vu with this, I must go back several years, do you remember something like this we talked about a long time ago?
As far as approving an Aqua well?
Well, it was this whole issue, yeah, Aqua well, what happened and what didn't happen, in the future, we're going to do this, maybe that.
You did approve an Aqua well site relocation with the main street relocation, main street project realignment.
Absolutely.
In front of the Brayton Park. Site might be what you're talking about.
I think it is.
That there was a secondary source, we, we put a road over one of their two needed well sites. So in exchange for that, we allow an emergency connection to our water system. But that, they're purchasing both water on a as needed emergency basis because they're right here on thirty inch water line. So that was sort of a settlement of condemnation because we were taking, we took away one of their needed wells.
You rephrase my memory, thank you. Other questions or comments? Good? Good? Good left? Right? Thank you, Rachel, thank you, Sean, another good job, we have, as I recall, is it two motions, Sean, two motions? Someone want to tackle number one?
Adopt resolution number twenty dash ten to make and accept the findings of fact for consideration of and to approve special acceptance release and variance.
Motion made in second of all favor. Excuse me, I got a roll call again. Sean McGrath?
Aye.
Christine Kelly?
Aye.
Dan Barry?
Aye.
Pete Wilson?
Aye.
Aaron Wolf?
Aye.
It's all aye. Number two.
Determine appropriateness of a waiver to the architectural requirements and approve development plan for Duncan's Ridge well number five with the conditions stated in the attachment.
Second.
Motion made in second, Sean McGrath?
Aye.
Christine Kelly?
Aye.
Dan Barry?
Aye.
Pete Wilson?
Aye.
Aaron Wolf?
Aye.
We got it. Unanimous again, motion passes, thank you. Thank you again, Sean, good job. Item number nine, consent agenda, mayor pro tem.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the inclusion of the revised May nineteenth minutes circulated by the clerk today.
Second.
Motion made in second, Sean McGrath?
Aye.
Christine Kelly?
Aye.
Dan Barry?
Aye.
Pete Wilson?
Aye.
Aaron Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously, thank you. And now we go back to other business, and I'm just going to do one thing, and that is an update on COVID nineteen. This is as of today from the governor's office, this is the second week of phase two. Cases in North Carolina is twenty nine thousand eight eight nine. Percent positive of the increased testing, which has been increasing dramatically, is still running seven to eight percent positive. Seven hundred and sixteen hospitalized, all hospitals are still doing, great job, they have plenty of room right now. And unfortunately, nine hundred and twenty one unfortunate deaths. The last report for Holly Springs, which is a little more difficult to get to, I might tell you right now, is we had nineteen cases and no deaths. So I hope that's still somewhere in the vicinity, am I, anybody got that better than me, as far as late, late, I think that's right, pretty much, nineteen and no deaths. So that's all I got tonight, who else next? Other business?
I'll go ahead. I wanted to share, this is a difficult time, and we heard from Pastor Brown today. And we're still going through a lot of protests, some peaceful, some not. There was a peaceful protest Sunday that I participated in in a non official capacity, I was just there because of my involvement with MLK and got to speak, and one of the things that became evident to me, and we had our great police presentation there as well. And I spoke about, as Chief Perry said before, he retired, we've come a long way with our department, we do a lot of outreach, and we have had some great training, and we're we have the safest town in North Carolina, so our town does a lot of things right. Trying to convey that, it became evident to me, and I've had a chance to talk to Captain Patterson and others after hearing what some of the residents said. I had to really realize, our town is not, does not feel safe for everyone, and that is because there are some institutional racism, whether we like it or not, I mean, that's what we heard, and I think that's the sense of what I'm talking about, so what could we do better? What can we help to make everybody feel safe? Because I feel safe, and I, you know, but that's not true for everyone. Some of the examples we heard, and I had heard this attending Douglas Chapel several months ago, before all this happened, they had a speaker there to explain to kids, black kids, when you drive, put your license on the dashboard, because if you get stopped, you cannot put your hands down because you're in danger. So they are told, when you drive, drive with your license on your dashboard. I don't tell my kids that, I mean, that's just different, but they're told these things because their reality is different. The other thing, I was relaying in my own experience, that I have called nine one one when I thought somebody was hurt outside on our street, you know, the night, I could hear them. And even had somebody says, well, were they black? Why did they ask me that question? So as much as we want to say that we're perfect, I think we have room to grow. And one of the things that I've been doing, is spending time looking at some of the rallies and looking at what is happening. There was one particular rally yesterday that was with the rally demand justice, and there are several folks there that I know, such as Brewer Webb. And they talked about, there were rally specifics, but they had a call to action for the municipalities also to look at ways, but we should be different. And it really means thinking differently and putting ourselves in shoes of other people. So some of the things that came up Sunday night, some of the things that have come up since then, I think we had a letter today, is what can we do more? As much as I think our police has done above and beyond, to some, it might not be enough, and it's a different climate, so what can we do more? One of the things that came up is body cameras. And looking at, what would that do? I think that would give the transparency and accountability that we might need at this time for everyone, for our policemen, for the folks out there. And it would be a safety blanket that they don't, they do now. And I reached out to the town of Apex, and they're actually meeting tonight, they are looking to implement in their budget body cameras. And what I learned is that it's the servers, it's the data you collect, so there's an extent to it, but what Apex was proposing was thirty thousand dollars for the infrastructure and fifteen cameras. So what I wanted to say is, given things are moving quickly, is to put a request that we consider adding, starting a foreground with body cameras, even if you use your numbers instead with fifteen, that might be a good start. And it says that we care about all the folks in our community and want to make everybody feel safe. Other things that came up, one of the conditions here is they're asking about looking for a policy requiring officers to intervene, and a fellow cop to come over the abuse of to a decaying man. Think that if they would have had that in place in other areas, what would have happened differently to George Floyd? They were also putting out, I think it's worth considering, demand and investment in community led health and safety strategies instead of increase investment in police. It made me think of our SRO programs, and what else could we do that perhaps add other services to the school? So there's a lot of asks we could look at, I think it's worth us talking about it, I think it's a time when we have to really think differently and put ourselves in shoes of folks that that have a different reality, and the minimum ask at this point, I think, is to perhaps put in, talk about Thursday, have like money for body cameras. So if, we can do better, we can do better, and we can do it together, and I think that's really important for us to think about, to talk about, and put ourselves in some other photos.
Who else? Your thinking?
I typically had a loss for words. This week has found me several times at a loss for words. And, and probably had a loss for words and several other times in my lives. And I just saw a post right before I came here, and I've had a couple of discussions, and I've been trying to listen as much as I can this week as anything else. And I think we all do that in times of crisis, you have to listen a little bit, but you also have to, you know, understand that in quickly moving situations, the facts are not always considered as much as they should be, and the listening doesn't always happen on all sides. And the post that I saw read before I showed up here was one of my buddies, and it was a, it was a military professional. A military member being all off away from, you know, the battlefield, the casket. And the question was, did anybody ask what color they were? The answer is always no, always no. And that's, that's just, that's a, that's a different reality for, for those who have probably, you know, served our nation. That question's never asked, and you never ask of who is standing next to you. And there's a, there's a, there's a different perspective there, so I understand that I don't have the same perspective as many. Because my bias is from my twenty five years in background in the military environment that is slightly different, and and I'm not, I'm not naive enough to know that, or believe that there was absolutely no racism and no bias within the service, but I think there's a, there's a slightly different perspective, so I think that, you know, we can, we can leverage a lot of different communities right now for information. And that listening goes across the spectrum. It goes across the spectrum to not just the voices that are calling for a denouncement for what happened to George Floyd, but to what happened to Patrick Underwood. A, an African American who was shot while defending a federal business or a federal building out in Oakland in the process of rioting. So there's, there's enough listening that needs to go on across the board. And we all need to denounce all of that violence that's being, that's happening out there right now, because it's not constructive to have any of these things that we're going to make as suggestions to move forward and to help our society. And thankfully, we live in a pretty darn safe society right here in Holly Springs. But yes, we can listen, but that listening is going to be drowned out by the folks that aren't listening and are causing disruption that is certainly not a voice of civil discourse. So rioting and destruction is certainly not a voice of civil discourse, but it's going to make it very tough for all, for all of us to listen if we're being drowned out by that. So I appreciate that what we had the other night here in Holly Springs was peaceful, and I pray that that stays the same way as it did before. And we all listen and try and figure out how we perform.
Yeah, I think, you know, the only thing I can add is it's been, I wish we could, as I said to someone on the phone, that I wish we could just go back to the beginning of twenty twenty and start over again. The whole, the whole thing has just been crazy. And it's a, it's a crazy time to experience this, and this is the stuff that younger people and our, my kids at least are going to read about, and we're living it, and it's interesting, you know, I work for a large company that has seventy five thousand employees, and yesterday, our entire company was at a meeting, you know, all virtual, right? Nobody's in the office, an all virtual meeting for seventy five thousand people, where we spent an hour and a half talking about current events as a, as a company. And very tough, very candid conversations about what's happening in our world, and we had Brian Stevenson in there from the Equal Justice Initiative. And I forget the gentleman's name, Darren Walker, I think, the president of the Ford Foundation. And I, I too am listening, and I think one of the things that makes us better people is to be self aware, and I think I'm, I'm self aware that I can learn more and hear more and understand more from, you know, our citizens, the people that live here, people that have different backgrounds, and I, and I welcome that experience, you know, I welcome conversations. I don't think anybody should be afraid to approach any of us, you know, I think if, no matter what color you are, where you live, who you are, male or female, if you have issues in this community, I want to hear about it, and I genuinely want to sit down, understand your experience and, and learn how we can make the town a better place to live. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, I too, like Sean, I'm just thankful that the, the event we had here on Sunday was, was peaceful and meaningful and supportive for the community that was there. And I thank those organizers for taking a stand to make sure that that's what the case, that that's, you know, what happened, and for all the future events to continue, I hope we can, we can say the same thing, because in a lot of other cities, you know, I have family members that live in, in places in the northeast that aren't having the same experience, and it's been interesting to see firsthand videos and accounts of what's happening in some of the other cities and towns around the country. And I just hope that ours continue to stay peaceful and meaningful, and that's the type of protest and action that this country was founded on, and I look forward to continuing that dialogue.
Okay.
Yeah, well said. For me firstly, it's, it's an opportunity to, to listen to my kids who have three very different, I wouldn't say very different, but unique perspectives on what is going on, given their, their ages. And it's a, it's a learning experience for me to hear what, what they're seeing and hearing, and how they're interpreting it, and trying to help interpret that with them as well. I appreciate the, the rally at Womble, and its peacefulness, I think is reflective of Holly Springs as a whole, and continue to look forward to additional rallies, peaceful rallies that help educate, inform, and share, and learn from it.
When Councilwoman Kelly, I was at the rally in an unofficial capacity. Learned about it early in the day from the organizers, and I can't honestly say that I wasn't worried. can't honestly say that I wasn't worried the whole day about what would happen, not because of our community. I I know our community. I was worried about outside forces that would manipulate it and use it for their own ends. Luckily, that didn't happen. And what did happen was exactly what we wanted. Showing a unity and love, but also some pretty stark honesty. Members of a community of all ages who have been here for generations who were quite candid and straightforward, saying that they didn't feel safe. That they, to a man, have experienced racism on a daily basis. And to counsel, to Councilman Kelly's point, there's always more we can do, just endless things we can do. And engaging the community, seeking their input on those things will be incredibly important. Not to say we haven't done anything. Our leadership in our town has done an amazing job. And while we might not have gone far enough yet, we have gone farther than most. I had the pleasure of attending a conversation that implicit bias with our town staff, including a large chunk of our police force. And it was hours of tough conversation, honest conversation, and it was important. We had members of our police force there, and I'm going to call out a couple of them. Lieutenant Parrish did a great job of stepping up and answering some really tough questions in a tough situation. And you could tell that not only was he speaking, it's true, he was speaking his heart, and we really appreciate him doing that. He didn't have to, but he did. Interim Chief McMillan went up to her afterwards, and I said, thank you for coming and looking out for us. And she I hope she doesn't mind me saying this. She said, I wasn't looking out for you. We're here to support you. And sometimes that can get lost, but that is the community we live in. It is not necessarily the lived experience for everybody. We need to have a conversation about body cameras. Looking forward to having that at the budget meeting. If we need to have a conversation about community meetings, I think it's a wonderful idea. We need to wait until there's restrictions are lifted, whenever that is, so that we can get as many people in the room and as many points of view as possible. And as we move forward, it is important that we condone this violence, whether it be against black citizens or business owners. Condone violence in all forms and not let it distract us from the important message that these rallies and these protests represent. And second point, it is June. It is the beginning of Pride Month, so I just wanted to say thank you to our LGBTQ community. We value and we're glad you're here.
Just just to cap the conversation, I will guarantee you that as far as my time is concerned, probably today I spent six hours discussing this issue with various people. There is another protest coming. Will be peaceful. We're working on that as we speak, and I'll catch up to date on once all the details are are done. I have some other things to tell you about. A long conference call today from, actually from technically the White House, but it is interesting. I will not spend the time right now to try to go through the whole thing. This could last a while, but I'll keep you up to date on on what I heard. Right now, I I think sometimes there's a time to say something, there's a time to do something, and there's a time to be quiet. I don't know which is appropriate right at this moment. I think we have to do something. But there might be a time later on where we have to kind of be quiet on certain things. So just an opinion. Managers, record.
Sure. No, thank you, Mayor. Maybe just to add a little bit to that conversation. You know, one of the things in August of twenty eighteen, my family and I, it was our first night here. And with this council and your predecessor so kindly welcomed myself and my family to the community. And when I stood up to the podium to to say a few words, I talked about three core commitments that you could expect from me. One of those commitments was around listening to the community, and I think you all echoed that, those sentiments here tonight. I just want you to know how important that is to me and to our organization and that expectation and that desire and that heart that we have to have those types of conversations, to increase our understanding, increase our awareness and information, as well as trying to figure out what actions can we do that will help strengthen our community, make us better, make us all stronger and more together. And, you know, last week as well, in the budget presentation, I started out with a comment about love and a love for our community that we all share in this room, as well as everybody out there who was at the protests and at other events. These are people who who do love our community and want to come together and do great things and and make us all better. So just a couple of comments on that and that commitment and that recognition of that. So that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
At this point in time, Counselor, close session. Now here a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you, our finest, for staying with us.